... In the visible, for the reading of justice.
Let us begin this commissioner meeting. Guide our minds and hearts so we may work together for the good of our community. Help us to be generous in our outlook, courageous in the face of difficulty, and wise in our decisions. In compliance with the open public meetings act, this is to announce the adequate notice of this meeting having been provided. Also, pursuant to the two thousand and twenty-two by all rules and regulations of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Burlington, time shall be set aside on the agenda for receipt of public comments. Public comments will be received with respect to agenda items prior to board consideration of resolutions to be adopted. An additional opportunity for public comment will occur later in the meeting. Public comments shall be limited to four minutes per speaker. Unused time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons may speak once per public comment period. I direct the deputy clerk to enter into the minutes of this meeting, this public announcement, and the amendment for an notice of this meeting. Commissioner Echol?
Here.
Commissioner Hobson?
Here.
Deputy Director Polian?
Here.
Commissioner Sages access, Director O'Connell?
Here. Thanks Erin. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the public and conference meetings of April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two? Motion by Polian, seconded by Hobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. So we're taking a moment tonight to recognize the important contributions of Asian Pacific Americans and how essential they are to Burlington County's past, present, and future. Asian American households are the fastest growing racial group in New Jersey, with about eleven percent of the state's population, according to two thousand and twenty estimates. This growing diversity is something we celebrate in Burlington County, where we have a proud tradition of promoting respect, inclusion, and parity. However, we must continue to do more to gain equality for all our residents, including our Asian and Pacific American neighbors. Currently Burlington County is believed to be one of only two counties with an Asian American serving as county commissioner. Our very own Valveer Singh is among those blazing the trail. Burlington County is proud of our diversity, and that is why we're one of the best counties in the region. Tonight we have a public hearing on the proposed regulations intended to pre-qualify bidders for work at the county's historic prison museum located in Mount Holly. The work at the historic prison museum will include cedar shingle roof replacement and interior and exterior renovations. When it is your turn, please state your full name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to four minutes per speaker. We will now open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments on this hearing? Luis?
Hello, my name is Luis Lopez, and I live in Dry Mountain, Holly. For this agenda item, what kind of improvement like for the inside, like the street boards, the stairs? You talking about that? Interior?
Well, from what we're talking about here, it's interior and exterior renovations to the museum and the cedar shingle roof replacement.
Mm-hmm. When there, I love that place. I wish I could visit that place at midnight. That would be the fun part. Thank you.
Thank you Luis. Anybody else for public comment on this hearing? Seeing none, I'm now closing the public hearing. Moving on to public comments on agenda items. Anyone who wishes to speak on other topics will have a chance to do so later in the meeting. When it is your turn to speak, please state your full name and address for the record. As a reminder, each speaker is limited to four minutes and may speak only once per public comment portion. Luis?
Luis Lopez. I have just three agenda item question. The very first one. Fifteen. And twenty-two. Could you clarify for me?
Twenty-two, uh, we're going to the place for the salt, uh, uh, facilities for the public boards.
Oh, okay.
Where we source all for the.
Is Carolyn here?
Yep.
Carolyn, could you address I-one, please? I think I understand it, but I think you can give a better explanation than I.
I-one?
I-one, yes. You said that right?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
We're doing a bond ordinance canceling previous authorizations that we did back in two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten. Where the projects are completed, we no longer need the funding, so now we're gonna reappropriate, reuse that funding instead of issuing new debt to, um, fund the first construction building.
Good, thank you.
Make sense?
Yes. Fifteen.
And nine fifteen is just the normal way we would go about soliciting bids for any service. Just this service is for general, janitorial equipment and supplies.
Uh, through that.
Department of Finance and Administration.
Through that question, uh, another part, an agenda item too. Okay, for the next one. Um, I want the first one.
We look forward to seeing you, that's what Luis, thanks for being here. Anybody else for public comment on agenda items this evening? Once, twice? Moving on, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolutions I-one to I-twenty for unanimous consent. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Deputy Director Polian?
Thank you Director, I would like to move, uh, resolutions I-twenty-one to I-third for approval by unanimous consent.
Second.
Any questions? Motion by Polian, seconded by Hobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Echol?
Thank you Commissioner, Director, I'd like to move, uh, resolutions I-thirty-one through I-thirty-six for approval by unanimous consent.
Motion by Echol, seconded by Polian. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Hobson?
Thank you Director, I'd like to move, um, items one, I-thirty-seven through I-forty-nine for unanimous consent.
I'll second that. Motion by Hobson, seconded by O'Connell. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Sane can't be with us here tonight, so I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution I-fifty for unanimous consent. Motion by O'Connell, seconded by Hobson. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Do we have any questions from the media this evening? Now move to public comment on non-agenda items. We'll now begin, each speaker is limited to four minutes and may only speak once per public comment portion. When it is your turn, please state your name, full name and address for the record. Luis Lopez starts it off again. Try to correct it tonight, Luis.
Mm-hmm. Good evening. Uh, I wanna say thanks for the pursuit, who gave me a ride from the Bente County, the Bente County Committee meeting. Appreciate for a safe, even ride back home. Appreciate for all three people. I would do appreciate it. And, uh, first question, has the Bente County received any, any report on water issues about the county?
To count, I'm sorry.
No, any water issues?
None that I'm aware of, but I think our public works director is in the back. Mr. Brickley?
Director, I couldn't hear your question.
He was wondering about any water issues, I think, from over the weekend. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, nothing catastrophic. We typically have some areas that, uh, you know, had minor impact, but nothing catastrophic over the weekend.
Mm-hmm, cool, and how safe is, uh, uh, the, there any, any, I mean, there any, uh, rule, any route that, I don't know, can never even face it. There any, uh, special rule, uh, anything different from this year election from the last year, or still be the same? Are there any changes?
I'm following that question.
Changes to the election?
Changes to our security, you know what I mean?
Security?
Yeah, like, uh, for double voting, you know, I mean, don't kind of.
Oh, for the election?
Yes. People come, you know, vote in a paper and vote in a machine, you know what I mean?
No, the same security measures we've had in the past will be, will be continued. We have the drop boxes for those that vote by mail. No, there's been no changes.
And I appreciate it for the people who came, you know, to me to work in, and I appreciate the video was uploaded at two in the morning of, I stayed up. And I have, you know, first few, when I wake up four in the morning, sort of, for twenty-five years in one comment. When I was sleeping, then, they appreciate it. And I appreciate, you know, my local youth, they come out here. And I appreciate seeing these people, amazing people in column two. I appreciate all of them, that includes Mr. Akru. Includes our sheriff, includes my son, my mom, everyone in column two. I appreciate all of them, thank you.
Thanks. Lori Howard?
Good evening, uh, Lori Howard from Mount Laurel, New Jersey. It's nice to see everybody tonight. Um, I'm here again to advocate for rebuilding this inner village, just to get some sort of support verbally or written, something to show that the commissioners support this project. Um, in the past, the state has said there was not county funding to pay for this. But again, there's now a lot of federal infrastructure funding. And unfortunately, we, as residents of New Jersey and Burlington County, don't know how this money is being spent. So it leads me to question, does Burlington County have priorities for infrastructure funding at all? And if so, please share them. If you're not sharing them, I just wonder why. Um, so in terms of rebuilding the bridge, as you know, we do have a website. We continue to get likes on it. This has been happening since two thousand and fifteen, so this issue is not going to die. We were looking to, as county commissioners, to represent the voices of the people who signed petitions, who placed information on the Facebook page, who come to the meeting, who email. It seems right now that it's just silence throughout the county, so it's commissioner level. Um, some of these similar people have not responded to me, because I believe they live close to the bridge, so I'm pretty sure they don't want it. But in terms of, it just seems, and again, it'll be me, but I don't hear anything. I just feel like everybody's coming together not to talk about this. So people, before they run for office, very supportive, not just on commissioner level, at county councils as well. But it seems, it seems as soon as people get into office, they just, they have nothing left to say. So it is disappointing. Um, also, I wanted to be here to speak for some senior citizens who have spoken to me directly. Don't feel comfortable coming here and speak for whatever reason. But they do feel like Burlington County commissioners have left them behind. There are a lot of quality of life issues with the bridge being gone. People are not able to get their doctor's appointments. People are not able to get, you know, have that nice, um, independence that they had before. It's just taken away, and they really do feel like the county just doesn't care about them. So I'm trying to tell them that the county does care, but I don't have any evidence of that. It's just silence whenever asked about the bridge. Um, in terms of the pedestrian bridge, I know that was an option. Well, I guess decisions have yet to be made, but based upon some research, I found that the conceptual design was, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, with information I received through open requests. But since that conceptual design phase went through, what are the next steps? This is not clear, again. So also looking at conceptual design, it seems like the majority of traffic will be coming in from the Mount Laurel side. There would not be access vehicular from the Laurel side, but it looks like by Tiffany Lane, that they're hoping, looking to build some sort of access to the bridge. So again, did anybody talk to the people in Tiffany Lane about that? So if I were living there, I'd be very concerned that there's gonna be people coming right up the street to the pedestrian bridge. So again, I don't support a pedestrian bridge. I guess now we're looking at seven to ten million dollars. And I'm thinking, the county doesn't have money, so again, that's federal money you would have to pursue, but overall, I just want the county to say something. And if you can't say something, speak to someone who has some decision-making power. It seems to be Senator Singleton is the one that has put that priority forth. But if he doesn't hear from the county, he's not gonna do anything. If you don't support it, please be sincere and state the reason why. It's not money right now. There's federal funding available, and you need to represent the residents of Burlington County. There's no need that this has been going on for, what, seven years I've been coming to these meetings? Republican, Democrat, it doesn't seem to matter who's up in the seat. People say one thing to get voted in, and then once they get in, everybody's silent. And I'm saying in just county level as well as township level. Mount Laurel's not answering questions. People that supported it from long ago no longer support it once that they elected. And I just don't know what it is. I know you cannot have this dialogue if you're here, but I'm sure you can hear my voice. It's very frustrating. And from the fact that senior citizens don't even feel comfortable coming to you to speak about this, that's sad. It's just sad overall, so I just wanna let you know that.
Ms. Howard, uh, I, I'm sad to hear that anybody is, um, afraid or fearful of full approaches. Or we're not people that wanna make people feel afraid. To your first point about not hearing anything, while the infrastructure bill was passed and signed into law, the money has not shown up here yet in, in Burlington County. I received a question about this before, I don't think it was from you, but it was from someone. And I went to Senator Singleton thinking he might know before, because the money will go from the feds to the state, and then from the state to the county. So nobody's hiding anything, it's just that there's no money yet.
Well, I just heard conflicting things, that's why. I hear that the, the money's being settled down, you know, 'cause I'm a member of the Duller Valley Regional Planning Commission, I'm a part of their participation task force. So there's money that we know how much money we're getting. It just seems that, and it's, it's sad to say that we can't even coordinate amongst the county and the state. The state says, we'll contact the county, they know. The county says, contact the state.
Well, no, you, you know, if you're involved with the DDRPC.
Right, that's one.
They're the metropolitan, uh, planning organization for us. So I don't know why they would say there's money available, we don't know that.
I could send you a press release.
So I don't know who you're talking to.
Well, I'll send you a press release, send it to me, so then we have the same.
And please, if you talk to any of these seniors again, uh, they're more than free to call me, I'll talk to anybody. I don't wanna speak for my colleagues, but I could almost guarantee you they're gonna do the same.
Yeah, just give them some sort of answer, something. Talking is great, but showing some action is even better.
Thanks, Ms. Howard.
Thank you.
Ann Quinn?
Good evening. Ann Quinn, fourteen oh four Red Feather Trail, Brownsville, New Jersey. I've had time to roll over the last county meeting, and I would like to specifically address some, some things that have not sat well with me since the last meeting. And if I may start with Ms. Hobson. You made a comment at the end of the last meeting that you took your oath of office very seriously. But your actions in breaking the law speak a whole lot louder than your words. You are a member of the Democratic Party, as is everybody else up there. Ms. Echol was illegally put in place, and the law that determines how it's done was just swept under the rug, so to speak. You all, as Democrat county members, have taken the rights away from the taxpayers to determine Ms. Echol's seat at the next election. But you guys didn't do that. I still believe that if you were true to your oath of office, you would have done the right thing, and you didn't. I would now like to address Mr. Julian. At last week's meeting, you, uh, made a comment about the young high school, uh, boy that had said his piece at the last meeting, and I believe your comment was something to the effect of, that's how democracy works? In, in my book, that's not how democracy works. By your actions and illegally reporting Ms., uh, uh, pointing Ms. Echol to the board, that's not democracy. It should have gone to the voters, and it didn't. He said his piece, as I am standing here to say my piece again. But you guys took democracy away from the voters of Burlington County by doing what you did. You guys say one thing when you run for office, but when you get into office, it's all different. I've lived in this county for twenty years. I'm not new to this. So I am very, very disappointed, because if any of you took your oath of office seriously, you wouldn't have done what you all did. You broke the law, and now it's in court. The taxpayers are gonna have to foot the bill for the legal services because of the lawsuit comes off my back. I have to tell my, my, my granddaddy, uh, I don't have it this week. So seriously think about your oath of office, and if you can't fulfill the duties of a commissioner, then you need to immediately step down.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. How many, Ms. Quinn? America Phillips?
Good evening, everybody in general. My name is America Phillips. I live in one fifteen Tennessee Trail, Brownsville, New Jersey, been in there for most forty-three years. I do often in the past travel between five thirty east and Route seventy. I know that there's been a lot of accidents in there, and I know that this past year, the road department were working there. They put some kind of light, we need a traffic light to save a life. Not only for residents in the county, for the tourists who travel all across southerners. My next step would be.
Ms. Phillips, where was that?
Uh, five thirty west and Route seventy, uh, east.
Thank you.
Thank you. My next one will be formal circle. Formal circle at between seventy and seventy-two, in the east and west, whatever. There's been a lot of accidents in there. For many years I've been hearing this story, they're going to fix it, they're going to do everything. The sad part is, they, and you lie. Sometimes they don't even cut the lawn. If I'm, and coming from seventy-two, here in west, they cannot see my car. That's very dangerous. What I noticed, Route two oh six, red lion circle, what we call it. That's S in the best chain. That's been saving a lot of lives. Why? Because that warning light where you guys got there, that's, that where the formal circle needs. Signs and poles doesn't do the job. You know what they do with the signs and the pole? They take it with them. I was a firefighter in the field, and I saw plenty of those. And for us to save a life, I live down the road. I commend the commissioners, the commissioners, to talk to the state, because when I call the state, they tell me the county's the one in charge. That's mean, we the residents put them in there. Now, yes, do something for the residents. Yes, don't sit and look nice in there, and don't worry about who put you in the place, because every single soul voted for you guys to be there. You didn't get there because you just wanna get, uh, choose the symbol. Somebody put you there. Okay, now.
Ms. Phillips, can I just stop you a second?
Yes, go ahead.
The roads you're talking about, they're all state roads. So whoever you're talking to at the state, they told you it's Burlington County's responsibility, or any other county in the state. We don't have jurisdiction on state roads. Am I correct, Mr. Brickley?
That's correct.
I understand that, Mr. Commissioner. I understand that. But you the one, you guys are voices. We put you guys there because we wanna have something done in our communities. I know they are state roads. I know that. As a firefighter, I know better than that. I just wanna bring you the tension. And I just hope, hm, that before the summer is over, in five two east, in Route seven east, a traffic light will be put there, because that little warning light doesn't mean beans. Okay, I'm gonna make a statement, and I will step down for the meeting last time. Okay, in reference to the meeting last time, I four minutes up?
Yes.
Can I say something, please? Nobody else?
Go ahead, Ms. Phillips.
Okay, I think I hear my rights. Okay, I attend the meeting last time, and I, I recall that I spoke. And what I wanna say for the last time is, is that how our county who represent us works. Depends who you know and who you are. Okay? And it's illegal. I was a state worker for twenty-eight years. I was a chapister for the union for eighty-four to two thousand and ten. I know how, you know, I mean, how the system work. Depends who you know. Now, the person when you guys made a commitment and put it there, you should be away until November. What is that area for you people? The war was coming to the end, the train ride that won the last train waiting town? No, you did wrong. And I just hope that you guys, whoever made the decision, took everybody for a ride, and thank you, good night.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Your what?
Randy Burrow?
Good evening. Randy Burrow, four ten Main Street, Lawrenceville, New Jersey. I'd like to welcome Commissioner Allison Echol, and thank her for previous service and willingness to step forward and help county government and to make Burlington County a premier destination for families and businesses. During the last several years, this board has, uh, demonstrated its values and priorities, and I'm here to tell you that all the right ones. Prioritize affordability by keeping our county taxes low. Thank you very much. We always manage the taxpayer dollars prudently and wisely, and succeeded in delivering critical services to families or, or to make the quality here great. Thank you. County parks and recreation, road repairs, and infrastructure, um, assistance to the danger in losing their homes, and zero interest loans to small businesses in recovery, or in the danger of going under. Support for seniors and vulnerable, vulnerable, um, populations. The board has succeeded in, um, the prior boards have failed. You have shown possible government, uh, responsibility by compassion. I'm proud of the job that you guys are doing up here. And I wanna let you know that a lot of other residents feel the same way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. Stacy Jett?
Hi, I'm Stacy Jett of nineteen Sparkmore Court in Pemberton. And I'm here to speak in support of this entire board. As someone who lives in the county, I wanna tell you that I appreciate the job you've done under extremely challenging circumstances. You've helped keep people safe and in their homes. You've improved our county parks. You help businesses stay afloat and rebound. And you did it all while keeping our county tax the lowest in New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jett. I'm not sure I can see this person, I think the last name is Williams?
Willis, Justin Willis, yes, sir. I, I apologize.
We're gonna talk about your peoplance.
One other day, don't worry. All right, good evening. How is everybody? Thank you very much. Um, I'm just here to speak in support of Commissioner Echol. Uh, from what I've read, she is a kind of smart.
I'm sorry, is your name?
Oh! That's my, my apologies. Uh, Justin Willis, and I live at seven fifteen Fifth Street in Bel Airan. So, from what I've read, she is the kind of smart, qualified, and hardworking person we want to represent us. She's not just someone who talks about service. She's lived it and has already demonstrated her ability to be a leader for our communities. I wanna thank her and the entire board. And I wanna encourage you all to keep focused on the things you've been doing, the things that really matter here in Burlington County. Thank you all for your time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jett. Do we have anybody else for questions on non-agenda items? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Evening.
Farnolet, two twelve Franko Savium Palanco. I guess my questions or comments, uh, have to do with, uh, Route one thirty, Jug Handle, and Bridgeborough Road, uh, which I know is a state issue, uh, with the truck traffic, uh, that has, uh, actually increased in the area. The state has, I guess. The state has, I guess, had some plans in the works. And I know that Edgewater Park and Palanco are working together with the Bridge Commission and the county in trying to get that project moving. And I know it takes time and it takes money to get that going. But our traffic, especially at dinnertime at that jug handle, just backs up on the southbound side, or no, I guess be the northbound side. And if the commission has done anything in that area as far as communicating with the state, if you have anything in the works to help move that along, that'd be appreciated.
So you're talking about the jug handle on southbound 130 at Bridgeborough by the ice cream place?
Correct.
Okay.
Right across where, I guess, used to be Holiday.
Yes. I know the state has... When we redeveloped the old Olympia Lakes property into Willimberl Lakes, if you remember, the entrance to Olympia Lakes used to be right there off 130.
Right.
We were going to do that again, and the state informed us that they had plans for the jug handle. So that they wanted us to leave that. And if you notice, the entrance to Willimberl Lakes Park is out of, it's off of Government and Cocos Road.
Right.
Other than that, I don't know of any more plans. I see our public works director in the back, but I don't know if he knows anything.
Director, we have, we've met with DDRPC, and that intersection has been listed as one of the county's priorities. That we've asked the DDRPC and the state to, you know, do whatever they can to forward whatever design or concept they have, as I said, and ask them to treat it as a priority.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Redd, I know what you mean. I've been on Route 130, I rush out. And it's much, it's very similar to a jug handle we have in Delran on the same side of 130. It's not adequate enough to take the volume of cars. The cars then back up onto 130, creating a hazard. And I know there have been accidents at that. I don't know about that at Bridgeborough Road. I'll keep in touch. I'll talk with our state representatives in the Senate or legislative district and see if we can get DOT to tell us what it is they're doing. But I know we originally planned to have more parking, or more Royal Lakes Park in the entrance off of Route 130. And the state told us, "Don't do that," because they have plans when they rework that jug handle. But they haven't shared, or they share what their plans are. But I appreciate you taking the time to come out here and tell us about it.
Thank you. And again, send them a letter, you know, to share it with the communities that, again, every little bit helps. I know folks in Palanco have sent letters, and Edgewater Park, I'm sure, has done the same. But if we just, again, keep salving the board so that they keep their eye on the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Redd. Thank you for coming. Anybody else? Comments on anything non-agenda items? Okay, then we'll go to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Echol, anything for this this evening?
Thank you, Commissioner Hector. Thank you all for coming out on a weeknight and engaging in the process. On April 30th, it was my honor to attend, along with the Commissioner Director, the BMW Resource Fair at Rowan College of Burlington County. And it was a fantastic fair, and they're going to do it again next year. I encourage all veterans to check that out. And we also were able to launch a new Veterans Resource Room at RCBC. And I just wanted to underscore that the new Veterans Resource Room is open to all veterans, not just those who are students of RCBC. And it has a dedicated staff member to help veterans with whatever resources they might need help with. Just want to underscore that. It's a fantastic resource for the community, and it's open to all veterans.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hobson.
Thank you, Director. Just two quick things. Ms. Howard, I haven't had any updates about the bridge, so the last update that I received was saying that our Commissioner Director mentioned, from what I understand, even in speaking with Senator Singleton, there's been no additional information to share yet. So I apologize if you feel that we're ignoring the process, but I don't have any updates to provide. We have been asking questions. He understands the position. And until we know more, we don't have anything to share.
I just don't know your position. That's... I don't know your position, that's all.
My position is, as it's always been, if there's money, but if there's no money, I'm not going to save. Let's do it. If God has money, I think that makes sense for me. So right now, even when we had meetings in the past, the year before last, there was no money. So I don't, I can't see myself supporting something if there was no money. But to your point, there's a lot of federal money. So when we know what that money is allocated for, and what we can do with it, I think we'll continue an conversation. And then I'd like to let everyone know, the Commissioner Board, in partnership with the Sheriff's Department and Senator Singleton's office, we are collecting new items for mothers and children for the Providence House. So this donation process is going on now through May 31st. We're looking for new items for mothers and children. It's diapers, children underwear, snacks, journals, coloring books. We are collecting those items through now, through May 31st. The drop box locations are the main library in West Hampton, Senator Singleton's office on Church Street in Moorestown, and all county building lobbies. So we will have this posted on all of our social media pages. So please share with your, with your family and friends that we are collecting donations. Happy belated Mother's Day to everyone in the audience. And Director, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Director, you're going to talk away my mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was sitting there saying, we need to tell everybody happy Mother's Day.
But first and foremost, as I've always said, we've got some of the best management people, day-to-day operations, directors, department heads. You folks do a tremendous job for us. Really appreciate you making us look great every day. It's nice, I want to thank you all for the support that you've been giving this evening. It's nice to know we do a few things right, so I appreciate that very much. And as always, you know, we do look forward to comments, whether they're negative, whether we don't like them, whether we don't have information to give. I don't want anybody to feel as if they really do not fall on deaf ears. And when we do have the opportunity to address certain things that seem like they've never been done, we will do it when we have the capability, okay? Be safe going home. Thank you so much for all the coming.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Last Saturday, we opened the farmer's market, Burlington County Farmer's Market on Centered Road, in some of the worst weather I think I've seen in quite a while. Thank God we had structures there for the vendors to be in, because at some time between the wind and the rain, it was actually blowing sideways. But I got to tell you, the spirit of the people that came out for that, and this was early in the morning. I was joined by my colleague, Commissioner Echol. Both the people shopping there and the people who were selling things, they were happy to be there and excited to be there. I think it's because it's one more sign of things kind of returning to normal. And I promised them that the weather would get better. I just didn't tell them when. But I think it's going to be a pretty nice Saturday. And I saw my first strawberries of the season in New Jersey, and I'm partial to Jersey produce. There were no more strawberries in the O'Connell household. They have all been eaten. So I encourage our residents and anybody, please stop out at our county farmer's market. I'd like to thank the Pine Lands Library in Medford. Also, this past Saturday, we attended their 50th anniversary celebration. And the last time I was there was for the ribbon cutting, when they were moving the branch into the new Medford Municipal Building. At that time, all the rooms were empty. And while they looked nice and new and freshly painted, I got to say, when we were there this past Saturday, it was filled with people. It was filled with books. It looks just like what a library ought to be. There were a ton of kids in there. It's, you know, a part of our library system. As you know, last year, our library system celebrated its 100th birthday. And in Burlington County, we were the first county to have a county library system in New Jersey. So it's something we take an awful lot of pride in. I'd also like to thank, if you guys have taken a look at our agenda tonight, I'd like to thank Loop Borough Veterinary Hospital for a donation of three surgical tables to our shelter at a value of $22,000. We really appreciate donations like that. We have a lot of generous people in this county, and you can add Loop Borough Veterinary Hospital to that list. And then today, I and fellow Commissioner Echol had the opportunity to attend the Rowan College at Burlington County graduation ceremony. And I guess, you know, it reminds me of when I was younger. It's just a very uplifting event. There are going to be two more graduations tomorrow, and I plan to attend both of those. But I wanted to point out, and I told her I was going to mention her name, was the valedictorian, Christina Scolari. In addition to being a tremendous student, she got up in front of everybody and told the story of her journey, starting college in her 30s. Her background as a young person facing a lot of challenges within the family, and how she overcame all of those. And to stand up in front of everybody, I can tell you right now, I'm sitting down, and I get nervous sometimes when I talk. She was standing at the podium and addressed everybody with poise, and dignity, and grace. And to tell a story, and this is the most comfortable story to tell. I just started spoke volumes, and I asked her afterwards to give me her name, that I wanted to mention her. It's just one of the people in this county that helps make Burlington County the great place it is. So I want to again thank my fellow commissioner for coming out for, you know, to that event. And like I said, I'll be there. I'll be there tomorrow for two more of them, and I'm looking forward to it. They say good things come in trees, so that's what I'm operating. I too would like to thank everyone. You may not believe us. We love to see the people in this room. We want you to know what we're doing. We want you to know that we care about all of the residents in the county, not just Democratic residents or Republican residents, not just poor people, everybody in the county. You all count to us. But you guys showing up makes us feel that, you know, our time here is well spent. So thank you all. And as my colleague to my right here said, everybody's safe.